Good evening or afternoon. I am calling to order the special meeting. It's a special meeting or is it a study session? Special meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School Board at 401, and we will move into closed session. Oh, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I will open us up and move us into closed session.
Hi, we're here for the regular session of the board meeting, the special board meeting on Tuesday, November 1st. First, we're going to come talk about language access.
Thank you. Good evening. We have Spanish interpretation available in order to provide language access for this meeting. Muy buenas tardes. Tenemos interpretación al español disponible para proporcionar acceso lingüístico. Thank you. Gracias.
Hey, thank you. Dr. Maldonado, can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, please rise and place the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone, board members, audience, both in person and on Zoom. Board members has requested today's board study session is on the topic of our school district's budget. As you may know, study sessions are opportunities for the school board to learn more about specific topics. No decisions are made at study sessions, and it's an opportunity, and there is an opportunity for public comment at these meetings. The presentations are broken up into three areas. Part one will be on where the money that comes to our school district is generated from. Part two is what does that money pay for? And part three will be on what are the accountabilities and internal controls that are used to manage the money in our school district? I want to give a special thank you to board member Wendy Sims-Moan and board member Virginia Alvarez, members of our Budget Committee Oversight, for also helping us to create the presentation for today. And a special, special thank you to Ms. Kim Hernandez and Ms. Lacey Preston for all their hard work in preparing for today's study session. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you. Let's move this closer. All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, board, Dr. Maldonado, our esteemed guests in the audience and those who are on Zoom. As Dr. Maldonado said, tonight, we are going to do the budget study session. For those of you who may or may not know me, I am Kim Hernandez. I am the Assistant Superintendent for Business Services, and this is Lacey Preston, our Director of Fiscal. So we are here today to have a conversation about our budget and our sometimes complicated world of school finance. We have separated the budget study session, as Dr. Maldonado said, into three parts. We will have, allow questions at the end of each of the sessions so we can make sure we can get through the presentation and to be able to answer the questions you might have. Please know that there are no dumb questions. If you have a question, to me, that means you want to know the answer. And so that's what we're here to do tonight. Lacey and I will try to answer the questions as best as we can. If at any point we feel like we can't answer you tonight, we will research the question and get back to you so that we make sure that we answer everything. Okay, let's try this. Oh, actually, I need my presentation. Thank you. Okay, so let's start with what is a budget? So budgets are pretty simply, it's a fiscal snapshot. It is a single moment in time of a spending plan. So we look at a budget at a particular moment, and we always laugh about tomorrow, it'll be different. It's, it never stands still budgets. They always change. So they're educated estimates of the revenue that we will receive and what we project for the year. Expenditures and encumbrances. So when I say expenditures, that means what we actually pay for something. Encumbrances are what we expect to pay for something. So it's kind of like when you pay for your own bills, you know roughly what you're going to pay throughout the year for your utilities and those kinds of things. And that's what we do in our budget, too. We estimate those things. We always, except for the unaudited actials, we usually have multi-year projections as well. What those are, it's when we, when you do a budget, you, you look at the current year that you're in, and then you project two more years out. It's important to do that in budgets because that allows you to see things coming and to prepare for them. So if it looks like in a current, in some year that you might be doing deficit spending or there's some sort of item that's coming up in the future, you have time to prepare for it. You have time to pivot. You have time to make changes. So those are why we look at current year plus two more. The only time that we actually have actual costs are the very end of the year when we do our unaudited actials, and that's when we can tell you really and truly where we ended up. The rest is all an estimate. It's all our best possible projections. So let's see. Next slide? Nope. Next slide, please. We're trying technology. It's not working very well. Thank you. Okay. So we have, in our last budget meeting, we presented this. It's the calendar of our budget dates in each of the years. But I noticed when I was looking at this after we had already submitted it, the next meeting that we have to go over our budget reviews is not December 14th, it's December 13th. So I want to make sure that that's clear for everybody. Oh, I'm sorry, is it 12? 12, okay, it's a 12. Pardon me. So that is incorrect. So we'll have to make that change on the slide for next go around. But what we, the last review that we did was our unaudited actials for last year, and you just saw that in September. And so then our next one will be first interim in December. And so that's when we will look at our budget for where we are currently in the year and again, project the next two years going forward. Okay. Try it. No lock, no lock, no lock. Next slide, please. We have, we have a clicker that doesn't seem to want to help us. Okay, so this is going to be a three-part budget study session tonight, and it's going to give you time to, to listen to what we're talking about and then to be able to have questions after each session, section. So where does the money come from is where we're going to start? What does the money pay for? And then what are the accountabilities and internal controls to manage the money? Next slide, please. So where does the money come from is the first part, and I'm just going to give you a spoiler alert. There's no tree with cash on it, even though their picture says so. I would love it if I had a tree growing in my office with cash. Lacey, do you have a tree in your office? No, she doesn't either. So that's just debunking that one right there, moving forward. So where does the, where do the dollars come from? We have basically four streams of money that come to us. The state of California, so when the state does their budgets, they allocate money towards K through 12, or actually TK through 12. So we've received some of that funding. We receive money from our local property taxes. And so you're going to hear different terms. We usually say that's community funded. In some cases, people will say basic aid. It means all the same thing. It's property taxes. The next one is federal funding. And the last one is we have local funding as well. We have a very generous community. We have amazing, amazing charities around us and just people, just individuals who have given us donations over the years. So that's where some of that comes from. We also have civic use funding that when people use some of our, our sites for different various reasons, there's, there's some money that comes to us for that. Okay, next slide. All right, so let's talk about the streams, the funding streams. The first one is how does the state funding work? So if you look at this in terms of, there's, you know, some glasses here with water being poured into them. And if you think of those as just different districts. First, the, the minimum state aid is poured into the glass, and then property taxes are poured in. And then the state fills the rest of the glass according to the local control funding formula. So what is that? I mean, I'm sure you've heard local control funding formula or you've heard LCFF, but what is that? So it's actually a formula that the state uses. They calculate how much money the districts are going to receive based on this formula. And it starts with base grants. It starts with, each grade span has specific base grants, and the, the grade spans are TK through 3, 4 through 6, 7 through 8, and 9 through 12. These are grades. So the funding for these grades, there's certain amounts for each of those grades based on the total number of students you have in those grades. And then there's some additional funding that's, that's added into that LCFF. It's called the supplemental grants. And these are for unduplicated students, such as our emergent multilingual students, our socio-economically disadvantaged, our homeless, and our foster youth. So those are included in the supplemental grants. And then finally, there are concentration grants that are included in this local control funding formula. And this is when there is a percentage of the unduplicated pupils that is over whatever the percentage is that the state determines. So all of that is included in the local control funding formula. The state does the math, and they determine how much each district receives based on this formula. And the next slide will show you what that looks like. Next slide, please. Okay. So you know, you've probably recognized that guy up there in the upper left-hand corner. That is our governor, Governor Newsom. So I put a picture of him up there to show, to represent the state. And that other picture up there in the upper right-hand corner, that is an actual picture of our tax assessor's office, the building where he works, or she, they, probably more like it, is the team, I assume. And so that's where the property taxes come from. So if you think again in terms of those glasses of water. First, the state, in a local control funded formula district, the state pours in the minimum aid down there in the bottom, and then the property taxes get poured in. And then the LCFF, that formula that has all those individual students in the grade spans and the concentration grants and all of that makes up the rest. That's the LCFF part. So in that, the governor can add things, any individual year. For example, this last year, he added, or the state added, a COLA, a cost of living increase of five something percent. I don't remember what it was, close to 6%. So any given year that COLA can be added into LCFF, or other things can be added in there. For example, in the state has added the costs, the extra funding for the universal TK into that LCFF. So that LCFF can grow, and it can shrink, and it can, can change sizes. But what the goal is, is to try to fill up that glass, try to give all the districts enough funding for, for education. But that's not us. That's not us because we are community funded. So let's go to the next slide, please. So our funding is based on how much the state and the assessor's office pay us, and that's pretty much it. The governor allocates the minimum state aid, and that's down there in the bottom, and that is $13.9 million, roughly. And then our tax assessor pours in the property tax money, and that's $143 million, roughly. So that state base can change. The cost of living can be added or not. It doesn't affect us. The property taxes amount can change because when you think about that property taxes, it's not just residential, it's all properties, commercial, residential. So for example, if we had some really great new buildings that came in, or new commercial properties that came in, that would increase the property taxes for us. Do the property taxes ever go down? Yes, they do. They can, they can. So for those of us who have lived through the 2008, '09 era, when schools were hit really hard because there was some, because we were in a recession, people can, their property values can actually go down. It doesn't happen very often in Santa Barbara, but it can. And when that happens, people can have their properties reassessed, and their new property values can change, and that, the amount that they pay for property taxes can change. We also just are coming out of and still, you know, living in a pandemic. And do you remember walking down downtown and seeing so many buildings empty? And so many, you know, businesses that were suffering because of our pandemic? Well, if things like that happened, that can change, that can change property values, that can change our commercial values. Things can go down. But we've been very fortunate here, and on an average, they go up. So we're very lucky. So when those property taxes get poured into the glass, they just keep pouring until eventually, next slide. Splash. When property taxes overfills the glass, the state determines us to be a community funded district. We don't get to choose it. The state does it. So we have had moments where we have bounced in and out of community funded status. So we're, we're not, that's not a given done deal. We're always going to be community funded. We have bounced out, but currently, we are in. So next slide, please. So what does that mean, to be community funded? Well, we do still receive the minimum state aid, but the state keeps our LCFF, our local control funding formula, our entitlements, the amount that we would have received. Because remember, they've done the math. They know how much we would receive in LCFF. But they keep that, and they allow us to keep the overflow or the splash out of the glass. So for us, that splash can get smaller depending on how much money is put into the LCFF. So it, it just depends on how things go. So again, that's why we're saying it depends on what the state does and what our property taxes do. And that's pretty much what we contend with year after year. Because when the state increases the base grant for all districts, like adding a COLA or a cost of living increase or paying for the universal TK, well, then we have less of the excess, less splash. We remain community funded as long as our property taxes exceed what we would get for LCFF. Now, not all community funded districts are the same. So again, you're community funded when the state determines that your property taxes is over the glass. There are some districts that, there are a couple districts that are in the middle of the, the state that are right next door to oil fields. They're very tiny towns. They don't have the, the prop, the residential property taxes like we do, but they get the money from the oil fields. So that makes them community funded. There are other districts that are, you know, I can think of a few that are up north that are near the Apple campus and other places like that. They are also community funded based on their residential, but mostly because of the commercial properties around them. So it, all community funded districts, they don't all look the same, and they don't all get the same amount of money. So, and, and, you know, we don't, we're not going to really, we're not going to compare with our neighbors, our neighboring districts. But just to understand that in the whole county, there are several of us districts that are in the south part of the county that are community funded, and most of the districts in the north part of the county are not. So they're LCFF funded. So it's just different. And our operating costs are all different. Some are smaller schools, some are larger schools like we are with the pre-K through high school. Everybody is different. Everybody has different costs. So we're, we're not all the same. Next slide, please. So how much money is allocated per pupil for LCFS compared to Santa Barbara Unified? So it's not, not a whole lot different. So we're not, we're not one of those big splasher's. We have a splash, but we're not a big splasher. So if you look at the grade spans there, again, it's TK through, K through 3, that one first grade span. For us, we were able to have $589 more per pupil compared to another LCFF. This is just looking at the base grants, not supplementals. The TK add-on, remember, we don't get that. So that's $2,813 more per student in TK that we don't get because we're not part of LCFF. So you can kind of look down the, the line there and, you know, 542, 557, 662. It's not a ton of money, but it is more, and we are grateful. And that's just the way it all adds up. Okay, next slide, and I'm going to give it to Lacey.
Okay, this slide shows our local control accountability plan. It has listed the four goals that are in the plan that have been developed with our community partners. This, the LCAP is tied directly to our local control funding formula. As Kim was mentioning previously, we have to set money aside for our supplemental and concentration grants based on the funding formula. As we mentioned previously, we do not get any additional funds or water. We have to use the water that's already in the cup to serve the targeted students, which is the unduplicated students, our English learners, low income, and foster youth. We'll switch over to the next slide.
Okay, thanks for playing with the water analogy. Okay, so we, we've presented something like this already in our unaudited actials, and we're just kind of pulling the same information. But what I wanted to show you here on this is that that left-hand column there is our total without our one-time funds. This is unrestricted and restricted revenue of $183 million and .7. The one on the right-hand side is 229 million .3. And the difference is the really pretty in pink number there, which is our one-time funds. So $45.5 million of one-time funds in, in the unaudited actials. So what is that? So that is, most of it has to do with our COVID-related funds. And we've received monies from the state and the federal government for that. And the way that we have used most of these funds were things like reducing the class sizes to kind of spread the kids out a little bit, for PPE, air purifiers, hand washing stations, and tents outside the classrooms. We also had one-time funds that were used to address learning loss, such as we did two years of summer school in all the elementary schools and after-school support. So the, when we talk about unrestricted and restricted, what that means is, well, unrestricted is kind of the way it sounds. It's, you can do more with unrestricted. But restricted is, has very specific regulations and rules and requirements around it that we have to obey. So some of the things that we have over there in restricted would be special ed, I'm trying to think of some others. See, oh yeah, our EMLs, so that it, foster, thank you. Homeless, thank you. What else, what else? So, and so we have very specific requirements around that money, and we can't use it for anything else. That's just what it, what it is used for. So, but we have made additional investments in our, in our schools with providing extra teachers. So again, we, we talk about lower class sizes, which means we have extra teachers in there. We also have made investments for teachers that are commonly known as specials teachers in arts, music, PE, and STEAM across elementary schools. We added them up. We have 28, which if you did the math, that's roughly about $2.8 million of extra investments we have made. We have made investments year after year in the junior high and high schools. When classes are under-enrolled, but we continue to offer classes for students because the students really want the classes. So this is approximately about 10 extra teachers that we do just so we can maintain those classes. And those investments are about $1 million. So the total for these extra investments in teaching and curriculum is $3.8 million. And let's see. We have, okay, I talked about already the local revenue and the civic use. I think that's probably it on that slide. Okay, next slide, please. This one is kind of a funny funky picture, but what I wanted to show here is the left side is the one-time, without the one-time funds, the middle is where we are now with the extra one-time funds. But eventually, we have to get back to the final column there where our funding actually has gone down, and we need to be prepared for that. So in about five years, we will be back, kind of back down to where we normally are without the one-time funds. And so let's see. So we'll, we'll need to look very carefully and to determine how to continue with some of the, the work that we are doing without the one-time funds. For example, I know people have, have mentioned the class sizes. We are currently 50 teachers over our contracted levels, which that equates to about $5 million. So any investments going forward, we're going to have to really think very, very carefully and thoughtfully about how we spend our money going forward. Next slide. Well, that's you, Lacey.
So we've been talking a lot about the general fund, which we refer to sometimes as our operating budget. But we also have other funds that we receive, and the California Department of Education requires us to track these funds separately. And we get all of this information from the California School Accounting Manual, which CDE prepared and approved for all the schools to use. One of those other funds is our food service fund. So we receive additional funds from the federal and state government to provide free meals for all the students. We also receive money from the state and federal government for a child development fund, and that's to take care of children, ages three to five-year-olds. We also receive money from the proceeds of our bond sales. We keep and track all of that money separately in a different fund. We also receive money directly from the state for school facilities. That's tracked separately. And then we also have a separate fund where we track the money we receive from the taxpayers to pay the debt that we incurred by selling the bonds. You can also find a list. We'll be bringing a full list of all of these funds in our first interim budget report along with the budget for each of the individual funds. And then that'll take us to the next slide, which is going to be, we're going to stop for questions.
Ms. Sims-Moan?
Yes, we have two requests to speak. Madam President, Joyce Aderson followed by Moni DeWitt. Thank you.
Now, okay. Good evening, everyone. I think you all know me. I'm Joyce Aderson, President of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. I really just want to thank you for having this session. I think it's really important for the teachers to learn where the money comes from, where it's going, and how those decisions are made. I just really hope when you are deciding how this money is going to be spent, that you keep teachers in the forefront. Keep, know that it's hard to live in Santa Barbara on a teacher's Keep, know that it's hard to live in Santa Barbara on a teacher's salary, as I well know. I don't live in this town. Price of gas has gone up, and even commuting now is becoming prohibitive for people. So, you know, I hope you will keep that in mind when you're deciding where to spend the money. A COLA might be really nice for our teachers right now. It would really help with retention, and it would help with teacher morale. I think that would be very helpful. So thank you again. I appreciate this very much.
Hello, Board. Thank you for your time here. So I'm very interested in how we are spending our LCAP monies and also the goals. I've been on both the advisory committees, and literacy did come up as something that is tied to equity and we want to approve upon. However, it isn't actually mentioned in the goals and, not specifically. And when you look at the total expenditure table, I think I might have mentioned this on other times, what is confusing is the, the action title will reference a goal. Like, for example, increase the A through G completion, and then that would cost $263,000. What, what's interesting to me is if, along with the action title, we could have the specific person that we wrote that check out to, like I would in a business. Because some of the goals are great goals, but we can't really tell if, how we're spending them is actually the most effective means. You know, because there's a lot of different ways to spend money. And so I think that part needs to be more clear because the whole thing about LCAP is that we are spending it in the most effective manner. And I think, given that, you know, we've had a lot of learning loss, and we just saw our new scores, and that, you know, a lot of people are seriously behind, I think it would be interesting to know if there's some fluidity that we can prioritize also our older students, because we will have students who are not proficient, who are graduating, and that kind of remediation is expensive. I know actually, we had a philanthropist offer to do that for a student at our resource center, just one student who was in our district. And she was a sixth grader reading at like an upper-third grade level, and it took four hours a day for eight weeks, every day of the week. And the person gave a discount, but it was like $16,000. And that's because this person's very skilled in all kinds of structured literacy methods. So when I look at how many older students need it, I'm, I'm wondering where and how we can pay for that. And I'm wondering if it should come out of LCAP, I'm thinking. Anyway, those are my thoughts, and I hope you'll consider them and expand the summer learning to include anybody who's not reading well, because it's good for our community.
30 seconds. Thank you. That concludes public comment. Other questions on that?
Okay, Board members, any questions? Ms. Alvarez?
First of all, thank you so much, Ms. Hernandez. Thank you, Ms. Preston. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado. This is, this is a great day. Because not only are we all learning, there's information being shared, but I, the way I see it is we're, we're strengthening our relationship with the teachers, with the community. You're getting the information that you requested, the information that we all need so that we can work together even better. So thank you, all of you, for being here. I really appreciate that. And Ms. Hernandez, I do have a couple of questions about revenue that if you could please, or Ms. Preston, either one of you, if you could please elaborate a little more. Our mission, our budget is driven by our mission. Our budget tells a story. And the story that the budget is telling is that our mission is to educate students. That's why we exist. The budget reflects your priorities. And I, I know you're going to show us expenditures. Right now, in the revenue sources, when we say that we have a revenue-driven budget, to me, what you're saying is that we have to live within our means. Because it's not like a business that you can raise prices because you need more money. We, we are told what we're going to get. So I appreciate your bringing that point to, to our attention. What I do like for you to elaborate a little bit more is, let me see here, on, on the funding sources, I see that there's a constant there, the minimum state aid of $13 million. I can't see it, it's way too small. $13 million something. Explain to us why that remains constant, why that doesn't change from year to year. Our property taxes will fluctuate depending on property tax revenue, depending on assessed value, but why is that number not changing?
Well, again, it's based on the local control funding formula, and the state determines what minimum state aid we will receive. They have to, basically, they have to provide some sort of state aid, and they've determined what that minimum dollar amount will be.
So even if we have more students, that doesn't change because our funding is from property taxes, right? And can you explain a little bit more the LCAP relationship to our budget? When, when we, when I hear you say the funding source is LCAP, what does that really mean?
That is, what that means is that, is the money that we've set aside out of the property taxes, and we've put into the supplemental and concentration grant. And that, we use that money to then accomplish the goals and actions that have been developed in the LCAP.
So even though we have unduplicated pupils, populations, and you talk about the concentration grant, and we, do we get any additional money for those grants? Or does that come out of our property tax?
It's all out of the property taxes.
So we have to make sure that we stretch the dollar to accommodate for all that?
Yes. So if we have more unduplicated students that have more needs, then we're going to have to, we're going to have less property tax money that's available for just general operating expenses, and we're going to be spending more money on those unduplicated students.
And in your presentation, are you, later on, are you going to talk about, a little bit about reserves and the importance of reserves? Okay, so I'm not going to ask you about that now, then. Thank you.
Ms. Sims-Moten?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation. Glad to see everyone here to this wonderful and exciting topic. We, we meant that on purpose, and, you know, it brought me back to the tree. Yes, my dad would say, "Do you think money grows on trees?" Obviously, it doesn't. So I really related to that. Again, I, I just appreciate the level of presentation so that how does it apply to me? You know, when you're looking at this, how does this, you know, apply to some of the questions that both were heard in our public comments? I do have a question with regards to, I think it's on page, it's on page 10, where we talk about that the state keeps our LCFF entitlement because we're allowed to keep that. So do they keep that in a pot specifically for us, and then we, we don't? Because that might be a question that people are wondering, they're keeping it.
No, we don't get it, and they don't keep it for us.
So we are not able, so just, that's, that's something that I would, I would ask if I had known that answer to that. Like, okay, you're saying you're setting aside, all seriousness, you're setting aside, do we get it later when we are dipping below?
Yeah, no, we don't. And another example of that is that UTK funding, the universal, you know, TK. They do the, the state does the calculations based on our students, but we don't receive the funding because we're not part of LCFF. So that funding just basically goes, stays with the state and just goes to the bottom line or is used elsewhere. Same thing with LCFF.
And then my second question would be, as a board or even just as a region, so when we're looking at the formula, what you said on the page 11, is that formula has been in existence for a long time, right? On page 11, the basic?
So you're talking about the LCFF formula? So not a really long time. Before we had LCFF, we had something called revenue limit. I don't know if, Virginia and I have been around long enough to know about that. But, so this was, our, Governor Brown changed the way the funding was allocated, and it used to be just a different formula. So this is a new-ish formula? I don't know how many years. Okay, go ahead, Kate. There we go. Thank you. Can you get on, Mike?
All right. I would just add that it was a, something that Governor Brown worked on for at least 15 years with the President of the Board of Education, Michael Kerst. And this was an, I mean, it is 100% better way to allocate funding. It recognizes independence and autonomy for school districts to make many decisions of their own. And so even though it's an interesting scenario or situation we find ourselves in, this had, this was revolutionary for this state to adopt LCAP and LCFF.
Well, I really appreciate that, because, I mean, our role as a board is about our fiscal, making sure that we are fiscally responsible. So where we can, you know, advocate for change. So obviously, it took a long time. So I think that's an important piece, too. If, again, the formulas that are here, do they still work for this day and time? And so how we are more informed, I think this is a session that informs us as a board, how things that are going, but can we advocate for something better based on the times that we find ourselves in? So I think that's, again, with this session, is really, really important. So the more we are informed as board, then we can really go out and advocate, if need be, to change it, to make it better, to be responsive in this day and time to our students. So thank you.
Ms. Capps?
I just have a question related to, I think, the point of this, just a very general question. What's, what are some common misperceptions that you find when you tell people what you do?
There, we've been hearing some very common misperceptions. One is around the COLA, because if some school districts receive a COLA, it feels like we should have two, and we didn't. So, and that idea of anything that, you know, is put into the LCFF when the governor announces it, and everybody gets really excited, and then we have to sit there and say, "Oh, no, not us." So a lot of times, it's that, comparing our district to another district that is completely different. So it's easy to get, you know, for people to just not understand what the difference is to be community-funded versus LCFF. That's typically what we hear.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Do you know the actual number that we, that it ends up being for community-funded per student? Because I know that with LCFF, it's around $13,000 now per student. So I think we actually get more than $13,000 through our property taxes. So I just wanted to clarify that it is to our advantage that we, we are a community-funded district.
Yes, you are correct. It is to our advantage, and we do receive more funding. I don't have that number off the top of my head, and I don't know if Lacey does either, so we might just have to get that.
That's fine. I think that it, it goes under the heading for me of Ms. Capps' question is common misperceptions, I think. I'm also hoping that, not, obviously not in this section, but I'm sort of forecasting for the next couple parts, that I think it would be really important to know who decides on some of these expenditures. Because for me, I think that's some of the misperceptions or misconceptions that I hear about is, you know, someone will say, "Board, you need to do this." Well, actually, we can't spend that money on that suggestion. It would be nice, but we can't. And so I just think that the decision-making process will be something that continually people will be interested in, and also what money obviously can be used for and what it cannot be used for. And the only thing I would say is, back on slide 14, in terms of revenue, five years, 27, 28. I think the picture's going to be better, even though, because property taxes, in my opinion, will go way up, because property values have, have done so for Santa Barbara for a long time.
You're correct. We didn't, we didn't anticipate five years out what the property taxes would be. I just kind of wanted to believe.
No, 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 I'm just saying that it, it is five years if nothing changes. Thanks.
And I should say, the reason that it's five years, we have different funding streams that are ending, this or funding and those kinds of things as we go along. But we do have two brand-new block grants that we will be bringing to the board as well, and that takes us out to the five years. So it's, in case anyone's confused by that, it's not the COVID funding that we're talking about, but additional block grants.
Ms. Alvarez?
Another important thing to note is, Santa Barbara's a very, very strong community because of the assessed value of properties, in businesses, homes. We all know, Ms. Adrianson mentioned how difficult it is to get a house in this town. And when property values go up, we all benefit. Also, we have to keep in mind that they may go down. And when they go down, they don't necessarily come back up as fast as they went down. So we, as an organization, we have to make sure that we plan for those unforeseen circumstances as well, so that we can take care of our, of our people. So that's also one of our jobs that we have to do as we project and as Ms. Hernandez and her team bring, bring information to the board. On, on this slide here where you showed the different funding, if we were state-funded, to Ms. Ford's point, I really liked the way you broke it down on page 11. So we actually get about $2,350 more, just very simple math, per pupil by being community-funded than if we were state-funded. So, and of course, it's broken down different grade levels. Doesn't mean every child brings $2,000. I mean, TK brings 500 in different grade levels. So it is to our benefit to be community-funded. So the trade-off is, we don't get the LCFF, but they let us keep that additional money, the state. So that's the big trade-off. I wanted to make that, that clear. Also, could you please elaborate a little bit more, Ms. Hernandez or Ms. Preston? How do we support other funds? For example, the food services fund from our general fund. How do we support that if needed?
So as I mentioned previously, those funds do receive their own state and federal funding. But as salary costs increase, as the costs for pensions and healthcare increase, their expenditures increase. And so any, anytime their expenses exceed their revenue, the general fund then has to cover it. And so when we do that, when the general fund has to help out another fund, like food service or the child development fund, we call that a contribution. So there have been times in the past where we have contributed to either the food service fund or the child development fund because they did not receive enough revenue to cover their expenses.
And what about with special education?
And the, the same happens with special education.
So we, you, us, your expertise, your fiscal expertise, and us as a board, we have to make sure that we plan for that as well with every budget and with our revenue sources.
Yes.
Thanks.
Ms. Sims-Moten?
Just have a, just a comment. So, and so this is a study session, so making sure that we're aligning this when we're presenting the budget. You know, we're, we're getting a lot of information here. So like, remember, we had the buddy's budget session, and we were talking about the allocation that. So how are we tying it together? I think it's really important to tie that as the numbers are there and what it makes sense, because we don't make sure that, again, the priorities are showing in the budget. But if you not have that background of where those dollars are coming, why we may be having to pull from reserve because of something else. If something, if specialized funding is exceeding its expenses, still be able to make sure that services provided, we might have to pull out of the reserve. So really important to making sure how we are aligning this background information to when we're presenting the budget.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
So much fun. Okay, let's go on to part two, please. So what does that money pay for? Next slide. Thank you. This is you.
So I want to start off by pointing out that this pie chart is just for the unrestricted expenditures. So we had mentioned previously how we have unrestricted expenditures and restricted expenditures. So this pie chart does not reflect any of the restricted expenditures that would be in special education, EMLs, educator effectiveness, and the new block grants. So as you can see from the pie chart, 85% of where the money goes is to salary and benefits. So as you can see from the pie chart, 85% of where the money goes is to salary and benefits. The current collective bargaining agreement included a 3.5%, 2.5%, 2% salary increase, so that's where the total of 8% comes into play. Benefits that the district pays for includes Calsters and Calpers pensions. The district also pays for health insurance, Medicare, workers' comp, state unemployment insurance, and life insurance. So that's where the biggest chunk of money goes. The next biggest slice of the pie is our services and other operating expenditures, and that's at 12%. This includes utilities, and utilities includes power, our electricity, our water, our gas, our internet, our trash, our sewer, and our telephones. We also pay for property and liability insurance, and that covers all district buildings as well as vehicles. This piece of the pie also goes towards travel and conferences and professional development. It also pays for legal fees, but not the part for special ed, because that would be on the restricted side of the budget. Let's see what else. And then also, it covers student transportation costs. The next section is, sorry, go back. Sorry, not next slide. Next, next piece of the pie is 3%. That's books and supplies. So that's all the instructional materials, instructional supplies, and office supplies. And this includes textbooks as well as all of the online subscriptions for various platforms. And the final piece of the pie is what we call capital outlay. And that is for equipment that costs more than $5,000. Generally, and this can fluctuate every year, you know, we don't buy the same equipment every year because it generally lasts multiple years. We're looking at last year. So last year, we purchased pool covers for all the high schools. We had one high school, the LaCuesta Alta Vista, they used their own site budget funds to purchase an additional van to get the children to school and for field trips. We've also purchased lawn mowers, and every year, we purchase custodial carts for the school sites. And that's where the money goes. So let's go to the next slide. We'll dive a little deeper into our salaries and benefits. So we've given here examples of different teachers' salaries. And then you can see as well the benefits that the district pays for. So the health and welfare, that is a negotiated amount that the district pays, and that is a flat amount. Whereas the other benefits like STIRS, Medicare, SUI, and workers' comp, those are all a percentage, and that percentage is based on the teacher's salary. So as salaries increase, and you can see in the examples, so do the costs for STIRS, Medicare, SUI, and workers' comp. And then that'll take us to the next slide.
So this is just one slide, but I have a whole lot of information for it. We have had a lot of requests and comments related to healthcare. And so I just wanted to kind of spend a few moments and talk about what Santa Barbara Unified pays for in healthcare and where all that, where those numbers come from. So 56% of our employees use our healthcare. And Santa Barbara Unified pays on average 52% of the total healthcare costs, and annually that's 8.6 million. That's just for this, this current year. So those numbers will change, and typically, they unfortunately go up. I wanted to talk a little bit about why it's only 52% that Santa Barbara Unified pays. So I haven't been here very long, started last year, but I've, based on what our HR has told us, is that 20 years ago, the district paid 100% of the healthcare costs. 20 years ago. But from then on, you know, whenever you're negotiating salaries and benefits with, in the negotiations process, there's always kind of a give and take on where, you know, there's only so much money and how that money is allocated. So after 20 years ago, from then on, the, the negotiations were always that the money for, would only go on the salary schedules. That's what the, the unions wanted us to do. I wasn't here, but that's what I've been told. So 20 years goes by, healthcare costs go up a lot, as we all know. And we all know that nationwide, healthcare costs are up and high. So the same thing happens here. But when we negotiate and we don't put any money towards healthcare and those, and only towards the salaries, we get into this position where there's not a lot of money sitting there for healthcare. So that's just historically what has happened. So, let's see. And I want to also explain why healthcare costs in Santa Barbara as in general are high. Dr. Maldonado and I went and spoke to some experts on healthcare. We talked with the capital advisors and we said, "Can you please help us figure out how to lower the costs for our healthcare or what we can do?" We were, we also spoke to, they recommended like a top healthcare advisor to look and actually assess our healthcare costs and our plans. We gave him all of our information and we said, "Please help us. How can we bring these costs down?" And the answer was kind of a little surprising in that he said, "We're actually doing the best that we can be doing right here and right now." Because we're part of CISC. And so CISC is a joint, it's a program that covers across the state, all the districts that want to participate to help bring healthcare costs down. And then we also join as part of our county, another smaller pool of CISC, which most of our county districts are a part of as well. And by doing that, by being in both of those pools, we have helped to mitigate costs. We've helped to bring them down. And what he told me was, "We're kind of in a tough spot because we have one, one hospital system in our county, or in our, our city." And I, this is not to say anything at all bad about Cottage, because they delivered my two boys and they took care of us every time my two boys needed to go to the ER. And they were great. But when you only have one hospital, the competition is not there and you can't really bring the costs down. So we're kind of in that sort of pickle. We've done everything at this point that we know to do to help bring those costs down, and we are monitoring our costs always for healthcare. Now, is there anything that we as individuals can do to help bring those costs down? Yes, we can. One of the things that our advisor said is, you know, if our employees really worked on taking care of themselves, and we want our employees to take care of themselves because we care about them, we care about ourselves, we care about our employees, if we do things like go to get our normal preventive care checkups and all those things to really keep ourselves healthy and eat well and do all those, get outside, because we have a beautiful place to get outside and exercise in, those will actually help bring our costs down. Because it will help mitigate things that linger and then turn out to be worse. And we can also just be really careful with, you know, our safety and those kinds of things. And that's what we want everybody to do, because we care about our staff. But other than that, that's kind of where we are today now. Right now, where, where Santa Barbara Unified is, the district is paying for 52% of healthcare costs. But if we were to look at increasing that coverage, the amount the district pays, let's say we went up to 70%, I've just done some math, some scenarios, just so you can see what that looks like. It's not anything other than some scenarios. So if the district were to pay 70% of that coverage, the increase would be 2.5 million, bringing the total annually to 11.1 million dollars. But I'm thinking that if we increased it to 70%, we will have more employees who want to join our plan. And so I just, you know, added a 25% more participation, just to see what those numbers look like. And that would be 11.7 million. So that's just a scenario. Another scenario, if we were to go up to 90%, these are just to give you some numbers, then that increase would be 5.1 million. So annually, it would be 13.7 million dollars per year. And I would assume we'd get at least 25% more participation. So that's 15 million dollars per year, annually, every year. Ongoing costs. And we know that our costs typically go up about 8% every year, so that's, would go up. So these are just, because there's been so much discussion around the healthcare, I just wanted to give you some numbers so you could kind of get a sense for what it looks like, if, if there were other scenarios. And kind of to understand why we're in the boat that we're in. Next slide, please. All right, now we're going to talk about declining enrollment. So on our state, we're not the only one. Our state, typically, most of the districts are in declining enrollment right now. There are some that may be increasing, but on, on a whole, we have declining enrollment in our state. So this is what it looks like for us. Back in 1415, we were at 14,291 students enrolled. And now our latest data, we're at 12,299. So how does that declining enrollment affect us, especially since we're community-funded? What does that mean for us? Well, one thing we do need to do is we need to monitor our operation costs. Because even though we're community-funded, if we keep declining and keep declining, we really need to kind of really look at how that affects our schools. Will we get to a place where it doesn't make any sense to have all of our schools open? Maybe. We always just need to look at that. Like, what are our operation costs? Does it make sense to keep a school open? And those are all things that we would always be looking at and monitoring. We do not anticipate this at this time. I just want to let you know that those are things that we keep an eye on. Because it could happen in the future, and we just want to make sure that, that we are all aware of those things. Now, the other thing is, where enrollment does affect our funding? Are those things that are kind of outside of LCFF and the funding that we, we receive funding differently? That's, sometimes they're called categorical funding. So an example is our career technology education, and another really good example is special ed. So those things are based on the amount of students that you have in those programs. So if those, if our funding, actually, it's based on the total number, for special ed, it's based on the total number of ADA, average daily attendance. So if our average daily attendance is declining, we receive less money for special ed, even if our special ed pupils are increasing. So that's where you get into a position where you may not have as much funding as you need to cover those, those kids. Okay, next slide. Ooh, I sound like I'm being all depressing. I'm so sorry. Next slide. Let's talk about our school site allocations. So this is one of those questions that I think there's a little bit of misperception on, is like, who makes the decisions at the sites regarding the budgets? And really, our, our principals manage the spending decisions at their sites. But the funding comes, again, in some different streams, right? Funding streams. So we have some funding that is allocated based on the unduplicated students that we talked about before. Remember the, the EMLs, the foster youth, the homeless, and the socio-economically disadvantaged students? So some of that funding is the, that we allocate to the sites is the Title I funding. And that money is, there are school site councils that help to manage how that money is spent. And we also have LCAP money that we talked about earlier. Again, it comes from our property taxes, but we allocate it to the sites for the needs of, that, for our goals. And we have site leadership teams that also monitor that, that funding and how it's spent. Then we have funding that we allocate based on the total number of students and also an equity index that we have just started last year for extra support for the students who have extra needs. So there's general funding and there's lottery, and we will look at the equity index link in just a second. But then there are a few of our schools that also receive additional funding, excuse me, for, for specific reasons, and these are pretty restricted. The comprehensive support and improvement funds, and also the comprehensive coordinated early intervening services. So not all sites receive this money, but some do. Okay, next slide. So I think you asked someone, I can't remember who, I think maybe Virginia, asked a question about how we prioritize our funding and how we determine how we're going to spend our funding. And Santa Barbara Unified is dedicated to providing funding to achieve equity in our schools. That's like a, one of our main, main things. We really want to make sure that we do that. So schools that have higher needs with students, again, those unduplicated count, students that we talked about, and including special ed, if they have higher needs in their sites, then we allocate more money to them because they have extra needs. So can you click on the link, please? And let's see if we can do this. Oh, does it say? Okay. Can you make it as big as you possibly can? What's that? Uh, maybe. So what this is, it's a spreadsheet that we have that's going to help determine the schools that need additional funding because they have higher needs. So we just started this last year, and these numbers are based on last year's numbers. So they haven't been updated for the current, the current information. But that's how we started for last year. So we have the, the different schools on the left side, and they're different colors, as you can see. So the schools that have, that are in red, the Cleveland Franklin Harding McKinley, Lacumbra, Santa Barbara Junior High, LaCuesta, and Alta Vista, and Kitzel. They're the schools that have the higher needs, because we just look at percentages. So if you just look across, is there any way to make it a little tiny bit bigger? As big as you can make it. If not, I'll just talk to you, but everybody's going to go blind and they don't want to do that. Very special glasses. Very good, thank you. All right, so let's take a look at, well, the easier one is Franklin because they have more red across. So we take a look at Franklin. They have 443 students. They have four foster youth. 93 homeless, 418 socio-economically disadvantaged, 208 emergent multilingual students, and six, there we go, 68 students with disabilities. And then the far, the last columns are also star testing scores. So if you take a look at that and you, we, down at the bottom, we kind of do a balancing, like percentages, if you're between this percentage and this percentage, it's considered high needs. So a school like Franklin, with 94.4% socio, socio-economically disadvantaged students, as well as 21% homeless and 47% emergent multilingual, that school needs extra money. They've got a lot of needs. And so we kind of do that. We go down the line and, and if you are a school that's blue, then that means that you have kind of like medium needs. Not high needs and not low needs, but medium needs. And then if you're a red-blue, you're kind of higher than medium, but not quite high. We kind of did that sort of analysis. And then if you're a school that's green, you typically don't have anything in the red or blue range. So this is just kind of a visual to kind of help you see, and this is how we determined the schools that needed additional funding because they had extra needs. Yes, so we start. yes, so we start with the same base. And we also have part of the formula has to do with how many kids you have in your school, too. So if you're a school who has a larger population than than a neighbor, then then there's that's in the formula as well. So we start out with a base. And also have a part of the formula has to do with how many students you have. But then again, then we add on extra for these schools who have extra needs. So that was that was kind of how we we took this whole idea of we want to, you know, put our money where our mouth is. We want to really make sure that we are following our our priorities. And one of our greatest priorities is making sure we have equity in our schools. And that's where you put your money is where you want change. Okay, we can probably go back to the slides and we are on. Thank you, we're on the multi-year projection. Lacey.
Okay, we've briefly touched on the multi-year projections already. So I'll just again point out that the multi-year projections are us looking at our current budget and the two subsequent year budgets and determining what revenue we will be receiving and what expenditures we will be spending. We are required by to provide this information to the county as well as the state. We're required to do this at adopted budget, first interim, and second interim. Again, the assumptions are basically a point in time. It's what we know at that point in time. So this month, we will be preparing the multi-year projections for our first interim budget. So we will take what we know to date and build that into the NYPD. And a lot of these assumptions we get from outside agencies. This month, we will be receiving our estimated property tax numbers. So the county treasurer will send to us what they believe we will be receiving in property taxes. We will build that into the multi-year projection. We also get projections that are provided by the county ed office as to what increases we're going to be expecting and stirs and pirs, or if there will be any decreases in any of those percentages. So again, just keep in mind that projections are not actuals. We're forecasting, which allows us to pivot and change course if we need to. And being conservative is key. And just one other thing I wanted to mention is as we spend the one-time funds, we remove them from the multi-year projection. So because they're one time, we don't want to want to keep them in there forever. So next slide. Also, a part of the multi-year projections is what Virginia's been referring to as our reserves. So the state requires that 3% of total expenditures are placed in unrestricted reserves. We also have board policy 3100 that increases that percentage to 10%. These reserves are like a savings account. So our total reserves as of July 30th, 2022 was three point, or sorry, 39.8 million. And just to compare that to one month of payroll, one month of payroll just in the general fund is 15.2 million. So if we only, if we didn't receive any sort of additional cash or funding, we would blow through those reserves in 2.6 months. Oh, Kim, what's that?
Tag me in, tag me in. And so another thing that I wanted to to add, you mentioned the the percentages of 10% that we hold for reserves based on the board policy. So we did the math and in this year where we had 39.8 million dollars in reserves, 10% is 20 million. So 20 million, we cannot touch because we have to hold it based on the board policy as 10% in our in our reserve.
And we'll go to the next slide. So the reserves we were we were mentioning is kind of like our savings account. And while we can't touch it, it needs to sit there, we can borrow from it. So we receive a majority of our cash from property taxes. And we don't receive that cash until the taxpayer payers pay their property taxes. So that pink line is when we receive our cash. So you can see we receive a majority of that money in December and a majority of that money in April. But we have bills and employees to pay throughout the entire school year. So we got to make that cash spread out. So anytime that we are a little short, which happens in October, November, and it could potentially happen in March, we borrow money from the reserves to make to just kind of get us through the month. And then as soon as we receive the property tax money, money, then we refill that savings account. So that's just another reason why it's important to have those reserves there. If we did not have the reserves, we would have to borrow the money. And with that comes additional expenses as an interest. So it's better that we use the reserves and then and not have to pay the additional cost to borrow. And the next slide. Oh, that'll take us to public comment and questions.
We have one public comment. Oh, okay, wait a minute, we have several. Okay, speak on number two. We have Kelly Savio, followed by Zachary Eckhart, and followed by Ashley Cornelius. Thank you.
Hi, Board, and hi, lots of new faces. I'm Kelly Savio. I'm an English teacher at DP. I wanted to talk to you briefly about an article published on the Independence website today called "Santa Barbara's Housing Crisis: How Bad Is Bad?" The article states that 93% of South Coast renters cannot afford a median-priced home. It also stated that in the average household income needed to afford the average monthly rent on the South Coast went from $76,000, $76,100, an already extraordinary number, to $95,800, which is almost the top of our teacher pay scale, available only to some of our most senior experienced teachers. And new teachers make little more than about half the income required to rent in this town. The article talks about the high number of people who drive 50 miles or more to work, nearly twice the state average. So with the statewide exodus from the teaching profession and huge numbers of retirements, this is a problem that cannot be flippantly dismissed as the sunshine tax. So we need to attract the brightest new teachers to best serve our community and to retain the veteran teachers who are already a cornerstone of our district. But how will we do that if teachers can't afford something as basic as rent? And I don't think that being paid a living wage should come at the cost of larger class sizes, which aren't good for our students. And I know that money doesn't grow on trees, and I know that this is not easy. But please do what teachers do every day and think outside the box. Please support the teachers who go to the mat for our students. And when we're talking about healthcare and and taking care of ourselves, I'm just thinking about the last five years and some of my colleagues and the second jobs that they have to take in order to make ends meet. And that includes driving for DoorDash, summer jobs at Trader Joe's. Let me think off the top of my head. And ride share services, pouring wine at wineries on weekends. So if we're talking about taking care of ourselves to lower those health costs, pay us, pay us a living wage. Thank you.
Zachary Eckhart.
President Munoz, esteemed members of the Board and all the dedicated staff that are here. Good evening, thanks for hosting this meeting and for giving us a chance to speak. Thank you for your service and dedication, especially through the last few years, which I know have been very difficult. And although I have watched some meetings, I haven't been here. And it was a little disappointing to see some of the lack of civil participation on the part of some of my fellow Santa Barbers. At any rate, I'm here tonight, and thanks for all that you do. I would like to urge you to allocate more funds to facilities and staffing to the extent that that is possible. I get the impression we, the word came up misconceptions or or misperceptions. And I admit that I have a bit of a perception that quite a bit of money goes to outside consulting agencies. And I haven't always felt convinced that those agencies are bearing fruit, you know, that that we are getting what we want from those outside consultants. I did come across a number. I'm not a budget person, but it was an LCAP document, approximately half a million dollars for MTSS. Please correct me if I'm wrong on that number. But it seemed like a big number. And that sort of contributes to a teacher's impression of a lot of money going out to others. And we sometimes feel like we are nickled and dimed on things such as paper towels, tissues, and adequate furniture in our classrooms, et cetera. What else? And I just want to echo the the comments of our president and others about the difficulty of being a teacher and flourishing in Santa Barbara with the inflation, cost of living increases, and everything else. Thank you very much.
Thank you, followed by Ashley Cornelius.
All right, thank you. And yeah, thank you. The last time I was here, I was talking about small class sizes and the value that they have in there. So I just want to connect a couple of things that were said in this evening's meeting back to those small class sizes. Two things that were spoken early on, one was that one of our goals is to prepare students meaningful, engaging, responsible, or sorry, responsive and individualized instruction for our students. I think that that is definitely a priority that we all share here in providing that experience for our students. And there is nothing that could do that more than small class sizes. If I'm going to be able to respond to a student, not having more students to respond to is going to help with that and on top of individualized and and being able to engage them. And the other thing that happened was Ms. Alvarez, you said that our budget shows our priorities. And so as we look at who is in charge and how we held accountable, hold people accountable for how we're spending our money, how we set that money aside, that is showing our priority. Do we have a priority for our students in providing a good working environment? And one of the numbers that was put out is that we're currently, I don't I don't know if it's overstaffed or it's just like in our future contract, we'll be overstaffed by 50 teachers, which is about $5 million. So we want to think about that $5 million, like where else could that money go other than making small class sizes that would be as efficient and as effective at meeting our goals? So I just really see that $5 million as the best way to provide for our students that meaningful, engaging curriculum that we're seeking. And then on the last thing was the mention about taking care of us as teachers, that we care about our staff as teachers. If I have nine more students a day, that means I'm grading 30 more minutes a day at the least. How am I going to walk on the beach if I am grading assignments because I have nine more students a day? So not only does small class sizes take care of our students, it also takes care of our teachers. And I just think that investment, $5 million or so, is well worth it and is the best investment we could make. So thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, Board, questions or concerns? Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you for the summary of how money's spent. The budget process every year is it's a challenge. It's a joy and it's a challenge. And I do want us to keep in mind for the future to really think outside the box. And I, what I would like to see in my perfect world, I would take the budget apart completely. And you'll recognize this term, a zero-based budget, just as an exercise. And say, if we were building the district all over again, what would we do different? And yes, housing is such a crisis for everyone. It's it's terrible, it's horrible. Something that we all have to work and figure something out. I wish I had the answer, I don't. But we can, what I would like to see us as a district is do a really thorough thorough analysis of our budget and identify areas of, this is what we used to do. This is what we've been doing for years that we can need to continue doing that. And it's our money being spent where it should be spent, right? Taking care of our teachers, taking care of our students and all of that. In addition to that, I also want to mention that one thing we forgot in the revenue sources, I think we all forgot, is how district staff goes after grants. I know at the last board meeting, we had Desmond, I forgot his last name, Ho, explaining to us how he's getting grants. And in addition to our regular revenue sources, we also go out for grants for facilities and other things that will help us budget. But I like to put that challenge before us as a team and to involve Ms. Adrianson, to involve our CSEA partner and say, let's look at our budget, let's take it apart, and let's see how we can do better because I know we can do better, we can do something different. I know it, I know it, we're a learning organization, we are. So, thank you. And now I am going to say something about the presentation. So on page 18, what is the money paid for? How's the money spent? You showed us that 85% of our budget, or 110,529,836, goes towards salaries and benefits. And so what you're saying to us is that 85% of our budget is spoken for. And how is that determined? What what determines that? Our collective bargaining agreements, our legal contracts? That's what's determined. So those are those are commitments that we have already made. So the remaining percentage of 100%, it's, in a way, it's already spoken for because you said you talked about the equity index. So one of my questions about the equity index is for schools like Harding and Cleveland, for example, that they get a little bit more money. Can you give me an idea of what that means? What's a little bit more money mean? What does that mean? Is that $200 more per pupil? What does that mean?
I don't have that per pupil, but what I could do is is prepare an analysis for you and get back to you on that so you can see the actual numbers, what they actually are.
Okay, thank you. I mean, don't spend hours and hours on it. If it's something easy, a ballpark idea would be really helpful. And then when, Kim, Ms. Hernandez and I actually both sit in the same committee, in the Health Benefits Committee for the county. So we're both aware of, also, that's another crisis that we are facing as a nation, healthcare cost. And being part of CISC, which is Self-Inured Schools of California, and we're part of a pool that is part of another pool, so we defray cost, we share the risk, we share the cost with all of our districts and the counties. So when we say that we've done analysis, that's really true because I've looked at healthcare costs myself. And we're actually in the best situation that we can be, even though it's not, doesn't solve the problem. When that comparison you gave us on page 20, that as an example, let's say the district was going to pick up 70% of the cost, you're projecting a two and a half million increase. What's a 1% property increase? How much is that equate to? 1 million?
Are you asking 1% property, the property tax increase?
Yeah, how much is that to us? So if if we see, if we see that we got a growth, a property tax growth of 6% this year more than last year, is that 6 million more than last year? How much is that more? It's okay if you don't
One moment.
It's okay, we can do it later, that's fine. I don't want to hold the meeting.
Yeah, we can take a second to look at it.
All right.
The law limits the increases to 2%.
No, I know, but I'm saying our growth. Because a 6% increase to to Santa Barbara Unified, this means a 6% increase to your homeowners, a homeowner. That doesn't mean that, because remember, it's cumulative.
Right.
Oh, sorry, I was in my side conversation with Ms. Ford. Yeah, what I'm saying is that what I'm trying to get at is the growth, the property tax growth. So if the district experiences, for example, a 6% growth from the prior year, that doesn't mean that a property mean that a property owner experiences a 6% increase. Because yes, you're right, the law, it's a 2%, the law caps it at 2%.
So a 1% increase from today, like how much we've received today, is $1.4 million?
So if we need to contribute two and a half million dollars more, we would need property tax growth of about 2% every year, 2.5% every year?
Right, so what is that, 3 million? So, yeah, so the concern with that is that that would be a growth that we would, so those would be ongoing costs. So if we increase it, that would be ongoing costs forever. And we don't know that our property taxes will go up by 1% or 2% from where we are today, forever. We estimate they're usually about 4% increase every year, but we don't know forever.
So we would have to plan on how we're going to cover that in addition to cover all of our increased costs, right? Okay. And here on our reserves, on page 25, I think, one of the points I wanted to make, because reserves are always really confusing. When I've talked to people at our visits and staff members that have called me and say, why are you keeping that reserve? Why don't you, why don't you spend it? Well, this is our umbrella. Remember that since we're community funded, we're not state funded, we don't really have a parachute from the state. We're self-reliant. So in the event of a tax relief, like a natural disaster, for example, I mean wildfires are a big threat to California. And if there's a property tax relief, then we have to dip into reserves to keep our operations, to keep our payroll, to keep our families going, our employees. So that's what I try to explain to staff members, that's why we have to keep that reserve. It's not that we're being greedy or that we don't want to spend it. It's really exercising fiscal responsibility to take care of our people, to meet our payroll as it was mentioned. So, thank you, I appreciate you explaining that because I know that's of great interest to many of our employees. So, thank you.
Ms. Simms-Martin?
Yes, so thank you for this. I just had a question, I believe it's, we don't have to put up the equity index, that small thing, we don't have to do that. But on that graph, it said, like for instance, I think it was Franklin and several schools that were in the red. So when we have the additional funds, what are we adding additional funds for? Like is it for resources? Is it for more time? So what would those be?
So the principals actually get to determine how their money is spent at the sites. So they may determine it's for resources or for people. Sometimes they'll add some extra folks in there to help support the students. It all just depends on what the principals want to allocate that funding for.
Okay. And how does that, again, you're going to hear me ask a lot about aligning to previous conversations. So how does that translate into our increased equity, increased scores? How does it align? How do they tie into those?
The goal would be that we're putting more resources towards the students who need additional help. So the hope there is that we're making sure that the students who need additional support, that will actually help their test scores, that will help the way that they, their outcomes and hopefully just help the way that they love school even more, just to be able to learn better with the extra support.
So thank you for that. And I guess I'm also adding to that is that it's going to take every effort, everybody's effort or community effort to address some of the issues that are before us, such as, you know, the teachers have come for tonight with regards to housing. And so I look forward perhaps us doing some joint meetings with the Santa Barbara City College, with the city of Santa Barbara, the city of Galleta, all of that collectively because I know those problems are happening there too. So again, I want to go back to better understanding our budget and where we can see, where we can collaborate and address these problems, you know, as a community, obviously even with the county board of supervisors as we have an elect here. So, you know, we might have a joint meeting just to address them at those levels of some of the things, again, so we can advocate as board members what we need in terms of our teachers and what it needs to take this district. And I know that's not just us alone, but as we're sitting here in this session, what can we do in terms of addressing those issues as a whole community? Because our community is at a loss when we lose good folks. So, just thank you.
Oh, Ms. Ford, go ahead.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I, this, this kind of discussion just gives me a stomach ache. And I don't want to be a doomsday predictor, et cetera, but we have some very big tasks ahead of us. And I really appreciate the speakers, in addition to the presenters, because I think we have to really do a great job going forward in understanding the bang for the buck. And we've had a number of these issues around accountability mentioned tonight and I, you know, I took some notes. We've got to figure out if class size reduction has the benefits that we believe it does, contracted entities, do they have the benefits that we believe they should? Benefits, medical benefits, health benefits versus salaries, where's the right kind of balance on those? And the specific programs that we have that are, that don't generate revenue, are they worth it? How do we hold folks accountable? But I just want to get a little bit on the soapbox today and also just say that this is a political issue. We sometimes shy away from sort of getting political on school boards, but I must say that California has the highest cost of living and is 19th in the amount of money it spends across nationally on students, 19th. And that is because of the law that passed in 1978, Proposition 13, which limits property taxes to 1% of the value of, the assessed value of that property. So when we all hear about the ways we spend the money, I think it's really important to always keep going back and talk with friends and family about Proposition 13. Because in New York, they receive $24,000 per kid every year. Connecticut, 20,000. New Jersey, 20,000. Alaska, 17,000. And they do not have the same cost of living that California does. That's my soapbox.
Ms. Kepes?
I appreciate that soapbox. And I just want to, on the housing front, thank you for bringing it up to our speakers. I know we're not going to solve this here tonight, but I just wanted to encourage our teachers who are here to let the county know, let your city council know, because there, because of the state law, there's going to be thousands and thousands of new units in South County and in North County too, but predominantly here in South County over the next six, seven years. And in fact, the county is holding a Housing Elements Workshop on 17th at the county building. I'm happy to share the information. But it's literally, these numbers are coming from above that we have to, we have to build new housing. And the teacher's voice, the workforce housing needs to be as strong. I'll do my part to advocate, but the need for workforce housing right as close to campuses as possible. I'm going to go out on a limb because I'm leaving. I mean, the Armory, I'm just going to say, the Armory is sitting right there, east side, it would be beautiful. So I have some wishes, I have some dreams, and I'll do what I can and push from my end. So thanks for bringing it up, it's a huge problem.
Yes, I also want to talk about the equity, equity in the schools and equity for our teachers, work for housing and the healthcare costs that teachers and the school staff have. I really appreciate the presentation and love the school site allocations. The color coding really helps to make it clear and present, you know, and helping understand it. I certainly am a workforce advocate and would be glad to see about, you know, joint meetings with other, with community partners to see what we can do. Because to take care of our teachers and take care of our staff is the bottom line, it's going to help our students. Thanks. Yes?
I want to just clarify something that I think I understood and I want to make sure there's not a misunderstanding. When we say the property tax percent, we're not saying that it increases by 4% every single year, like on top of that year. We're saying on average, every year we get 4%. Is that, did I understand that correctly? I just want to clarify because I think there might be a misunderstanding around that.
So it's our, it's our total property tax revenue has been increasing 4% each year.
So it is on top of?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing, if there's nothing else, maybe to go on to part three?
Okay, we ready? All right. Part three. So this is where we are, responsible on one side, accountable on the other side, and we're up there in the heart zone. So we want to make sure that everyone kind of has an understanding of how we have, we're able to manage our budgets and what some of our internal controls, external controls, all the different controls that come into play when you're talking about school finance. The first thing I want to mention is we have an internal auditor. She is a CPA and her name is Alana Matlick. She's not here with us tonight because it's her birthday and so she's out having a nice birthday dinner. So, happy birthday, Alana. So she is an amazing person that we have in our court because she works for us, but she really helps us to stay on the straight and narrow. She reviews our financial processes, our procedures and our systems to make sure our internal controls are effective and they are efficient. I should also say, we have another CPA sitting right next to me over here, Lacey Preston, I should just throw that in, who also keeps us on the straight and narrow. We also have external auditors. We are required to, all districts are required to have external auditors who get in there and really, you know, dig into your finances and make sure that you're doing the right things and compare those with the ed codes, the, all the different regulations and requirements that tell us how we are supposed to spend our money. Our external auditors are called ID Bailey. We have, the Santa Barbara County Education Office also monitors our budgets. They go through every single budget we ever do and ask a lot of questions, isn't that true, Lacey? And it's super helpful and it's very important because they have just a whole different, they're not in our books, so they can really look at our books and see what we're doing. We have state auditors. Last year, we were blessed to have FPM plus a bunch of other different audits that happened all at the same time, who really keep track of what we're doing and, you know, and we're doing a really great job managing our money. And we always keep in mind that it isn't our money. I call it our money, but it's, it's money that comes from the taxpayer for us to educate students. And so we always have to keep track of that and spend it as if every dollar comes from every taxpayer and that it's important that we make sure that we do the right thing by their people's money and that we have transparency and that we do things like this to help people see how we actually take care of our budgets. We, our board, all of you, have a fiduciary responsibility to review every single one of our budgets and you do very carefully and you ask questions and you also are part of the audit team when you go in and look at what the auditors have done. We have education code, we have California School Accounting Manual called CSAM, and we have governmental accounting standards, Board that, GAZB, all of these things tell us exactly how we are supposed to spend our money and how we are not supposed to spend our money. So we're all, we do all those things very, very carefully. And the state reviews every single one of our budgets as well. So next slide, please. This is just an example of some of the statutes that regulate us and our budget. So this is a question that I have heard a couple of times, is about the number of admins that we have. We actually have a formula that we have to submit to the state every year and it's an administrator to a teacher ratio. And that ratio says that the maximum number of administrative employees cannot exceed eight per 100 teachers. It's a different, then that, there's education code there for you if you want to look it up. But it's different depending on what kind of a school you're, if you're in elementary school, it's a different percentage. And if you're just a high school, it's a different percentage, but we're unified and so for us, it's that 8%. There is also something that's called the current expense actuals. It's a formula that is, make sure that we put at least 55% of our costs into the classrooms. So that, we have to maintain that ratio and so our expenditures, at least 55% of it has to go towards the classroom costs. We also have something that's called Every Student Succeeds, which is, it's a maintenance of operations idea, which means you have to spend pretty much the same thing you spent the year before on your expenditures. And if you don't, then our funding is reduced. So we always want to maintain, really pretty much maintain our expenditures. And another one is called the criteria and standards. This is part of our budget that we have to do every year, except for unaudited actuals, that's the only time we don't. And it is a report that we give to the state that goes through and monitors percentages and different things in our budget that proves to the state that we are fiscally solvent and that we are spending our money the way that we are required to. So these are just some of the statutes that we have to put in our budgets every single time we do budgets and we have to maintain them and we always do. Next slide. Oh, this is just in case you want to look at a glossary of terms from the school finance, sscal.com and you just, you can, in your leisure, click on it and it has several pages of terms in case you want to see some of the school finance terms, in case you're, if I said a word that you didn't understand or confused you, you can look it up there. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is a fun fact, one pager that we put together. We have a really great team that does infographics and Dr. Maldonado got involved with that and helped us with that. She's very creative. And so this just kind of gives you just, you know, a quick look at some things that I think we're, are we going to put, I think we're going to put it on our website, so if anybody wants to see, you know, just some, yeah, I don't know if we made, oh, we have some copies. If you guys want some copies on your way out, you can grab those. And it just kind of gives you, this is, these fun facts related to last year because these are official numbers, because the year, it's not projected, it's actuals. So it shows our total budget of 210 million on one side, it gives you the general unrestricted expenditures, you can see what those are, like salaries and benefits, 110 million, you can see all those things. And then the other side over there is the restricted, those were like special education, class size reduction, EML support, those kind of just like a quick look, you can see what's in there. The little, kind of like a circular chart there shows you the revenue and you can see most of the, like green color, that's our property taxes. We've got the, how much the 10% reserves is, I told you it was 20 million and it's a little bit more than that. We had a tiny bit of a surplus at the end of last year and shows your total student enrollment last year was 12,573 and we're already showing a little bit lower than that, 12,229 for this year. It gives you the numbers of the certificated and classified staff by the numbers, so you can see how much, you know, how many certificated we have, classified, management and the non-union coaches, hourly, temporary, all right there, just so you can just, in case you ever want to know what the numbers are. And then down there in the bottom, it just shows you our Measure I and Measure J, the facilities modernization bonds that we have. So 135 million in one and 58 million in the other. So this is just a fun facts thing, if you ever just want to know, you know, something on there, that's, it's easy grab. Yes?
Looking at this slide, oh, never mind, the one I have on mine is not changed to the breakdown of certificated management versus classified management. Can you explain the difference between that, those? Can you explain the difference between that, those two numbers? 'Cause you mentioned earlier the administrator to teacher ratio, and there's a difference with classified.
Right, right.
Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's why we, um, broke it out, because I didn't want you to get confused with that 8% that I talked about earlier on that ratio of, uh, admin to teachers. Um, that's, we're only talking about the certificated pool. So it's, um, we have certi, regular certificate is 842, and the certificated management is 61. So if you do the math there, 61 is 7% of 842, so we're below that 8% max that we need, that we can't, the cap, right? So we're below the cap there. Um, and it doesn't include classified or classified management in those numbers. Thank you. Next slide, please. Questions?
There's no public comment on this section?
Board, Ms. Alvarez.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. It was very well organized. I, I really appreciate that, and I know it took you a lot of time, so thank you, both of you and your team and everyone else that helped you, so really appreciate it. Couple of things, so as we develop the 2324, that sounds weird, 2324 budget, I like for us to start really early, so that we can have a partnership with, um, Ms. Adrison and, um, perhaps one of our CSCA rep. And let's, let's do this, let's start, let's see, let's analyze it, let's take it apart and, and see, see what areas we can improve with what we have. We are, we are very, it, it's a really good community. I mean, it's, it's housing, on one hand, housing is so expensive, it's so hard to get in, on the other hand, it helps our funding. So it's, you're, you're kind of stuck in the middle. So let's, let's do that. Let's put that on, on the list and, and let's start that process early for next year and see how we can all be thought partners and see how we can all work together, 'cause I, I think we can, can do a little better. So that's one thing. Another thing is, um, you mentioned that we received one-time monies this past year's, uh, for, I forgot what it was, ELOP and all this other acronyms. Um, I think one of the funding was, if, last time we spoke with Mr. Benz, was something like 17 million dollars, was that, something like that? Is that correct? And, uh, we used some of that money to provide, uh, one-time funding, one-time support to our class, to our staff members, did we not? Correct. A stipend, yes. A stipend. I, I'd like for us to do that again. Let's, if, if the, obviously, if the board approves, um, Mrs. Sims-Mothen, I talked about it a little bit before, is to look at that one-time monies that we received. And it's one-time, I know this is not a permanent fix, I know, I know, but with the price of gas, the price of rent, let's figure how we can give our staff a little bit of relief. Um, like I said, Ms. Sims-Mothen and I had this conversation, and, uh, the rough, really rough numbers is if we spent, if we took 2 million dollars from that money that's left to help our staff, so bring us a proposal, bring us a proposal for, I don't know if you can, for next meeting, so that it can be discussed and see if we can help our, our staff members somehow.
Yeah, I, I would just add, add to that, um, conversation. Um, again, bringing it for board discussion, right in the middle of where, where does the money come from, what does it do, and what other flexibility do, do we have? And I think a better understanding of our budget can work towards some flexibility. And also what, um, taken into the conversations that we were having, uh, just because we were knee-deep in it. Uh, but it, the listening tours, really hearing, I was listening to all things that people were saying, but what keeps coming up? You know, the cost of gas, uh, you know, the groceries, all those things that come up, realizing that, you know, again, it's one-time, it's all, but it's, it's really just getting at, really, um, proposing to the board as a discussion, we hear what you're saying in terms of that, and, and it's a listening tour, but we were really listening, but we really hear that, and to the, to the extent that we can do something, at least a small relief, uh, you know, um, and it's not to minimize the larger picture, but it's more to acknowledge that we hear what is going on, and to the extent that we can, with the discussion certainly across the board, and the information that we've heard tonight, how do we at least acknowledge that in some small way? But really, hopefully goes a long way with regards to looking at morale, to hear that we hear you, we appreciate you, number one, for the, for the efforts that are, that are being there in the district that's there, and we have the, we have the flexibility to do so, but certainly we wanna make sure what it looks like, we wanna be fiscally, um, responsible for that, and certainly the, you know, the, um, the larger discussion across this board, as well as bringing a proposal, what that looks like. So where we can do something, when we can do something, really hearing and receiving input, and again, it's making sure that we are fiscally responsible, and that's what we wanna be. And that's one of the roles that we, we, we certainly take to heart, and one of the roles we have to do is be fiscally minded and where we can support our folks that support our students. So, thank you.
Ms. Ford? Totally agree. Um, I, I have a somewhat simpler suggestion, and, uh, I stole this idea from someone else, so I, I have to say it wasn't my idea, but you might consider turning this particular fast fax into, um, something that's displayed, so that people can see it all the time. It's one thing to sort of be told it and have it here on an eight and a half by 11 piece of paper, but I think referencing fast fax is really important. And this idea, Dr. Maldonado, that I stole from someone else, was turning fast fax over every month and creating new fast fax sheets, and then creating them as, uh, placemats for meetings. And so everybody, depending on what you were talking about, had the fax right there, and it was really popular and it's really cheap. That's it.
Ms. Sims-Mothen?
Yeah, I did have a question. So on the fast, but thank you for, um, presenting it. And can we just explain, like, we have an AA1 move district, what does that mean? Because we wanna make sure that this information that we're giving out, that's what people wanna, you know, we don't wanna, what we think they need to know, but what do they want to know? And how does it relate? So I, I, and I'm just asking, you know, to maybe explain what that is in terms of that. And then on the, uh, the measure of the bonds, that's what they were, but does it show where we spent down, how much money we still have? Is that somewhere else to reference that? I wouldn't say we still have 135 million, 'cause we've actually been working on facilities, right? Or is that our balance?
Okay, working backwards.
Okay.
Um, that is the total amount of our, our bonds, so, um, that's the amount that the taxpayers voted for and, and that we have. So, but, um, we haven't spent it all, no. Uh, we still have plenty left. So that, um, that's that. And the, um, AA1 is our credit rating that we, um, just received for the, the last little increment of bonds that we, that we sold. So we sold them in increments, so the last bit, and now they're totally sold, um, was our credit rating, and that's a really, really good credit rating. It's almost the top, it's just one step down from the very top that you can receive. Um, so it's, it's really a great credit rating.
Yeah, so I'm, I just, I guess what I'm saying also, thank you for that, but so that the average reader is, what does that mean? What, how's it translate to my understanding of this fast fax? That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I had a question about the total surplus, the amount there, could you explain what that means on the fast fax?
So the surplus is the difference between our total revenue minus our expenditures. So for last year, we received more money than we spent, and then that surplus goes down to our, uh, reserves.
Okay, and, um, sorry, could you show where the, the amount that we spent is on the fast fax?
So those would be in the two, um, charts, the one that is the unrestricted expenditures and then the restricted expenditures.
Oh, got it, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, let's see, I think we have done it. It's like, okay. Yes, yeah. Um, the discussion, the presentations and the discussion was excellent, you know, just in terms of being understandable. Okay, so... Oh, Ms. Alvarez.
A big thank you to all the teachers for being here, especially after a full day of work, and really appreciate all that you do. And, um, I look forward to us working together and, um, together we are better, so I, I look forward to that. So thank you for being here. A big thank you to Lacey and Kim and the team, and thank you to all cabinet members for being here another late night. Thank you, Dr. Maldonado, and thank you to my beautiful colleagues here that I work with and that I have such a pleasure to see every month, twice a month.
Sometimes three. Um, and just a final comment, again, just to echo the thank you and just the comments to heard, and thank you for, again, for being here and being engaged in this conversation. Love your feedback. Did we really tell you what you wanna know? Is there more we wanna do? We wanna be able to do that? I mean, you, you know, you could be honest with that, we wanna be transparent, you know? Then, to be, that's good, because that means you're engaged in that and there's more information that needs to go out, and that's really where we want to be, to be transparent about the information, making sure that we are, um, answering those questions, so there's not assumptions, you get the answers you need to look for. So again, thank you all for being here.
Thank you. And Dr. Maldonado?
Well, I just wanna, again, echo my colleagues that I really appreciate all of you being here, and mostly that, uh, we have here, we hear you, we see you, we understand the pain points for all, all of our employees, and I wanna acknowledge that we don't have represented here, but also wanna include our classified employees, who are also equally suffering and sometimes even more so, when it comes to some of the high costs of living that we are experiencing. Um, and we will, uh, be happy to work with folks to make sure that we are open, transparent with all of our budgets. Uh, in, in my opinion, we should have school budgets publicly stated in our websites for every school, so that you can see where all the money's going. There is absolutely every intention that, that we have those, uh, transparent budgets and accountability, so for everyone to see. Um, I too look forward to working with everyone to help us look at ways to develop our budgets in a way that also shows that the investments we're making are resulting in better outcomes for students. And if those things are really working and whether or not that we make those hard decisions together. So thanks for being partners with us tonight and for being here late night as well. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you. And with that, we conclude our special session, um, at 7:12. Thanks so much. Good night.